A call to order, this special meeting of the Greater Albany Public School Board at 5:00 on 7/21. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move approval.
I second it. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Brings us on to Agenda Letter D, Public Comments, requested by a public invite to provide written comments submitted by the district. Email the district on the following topics: A, what qualifications would you like to see an interim superintendent? And B, what process should be used to hire an interim superintendent? At this time, the board has received a good amount of emails with responses to both. We appreciate those comments from the public. They will be entered into the record, and we have all had a chance to review those. We are going to move along to action.
Mr. Chair, do we not invite the public to continue giving
Yeah, absolutely.
those comments up until Friday at what time? Is there a time certain?
At noon on Friday.
Okay.
So please keep them coming. We are reading them. Lots of very good, diverse input. So, Letter E. So we have an action item to declare a vacancy for the superintendent position. We need to declare a vacancy before we can hire a interim superintendent. Is there a motion on the floor for that?
Some of it.
In second?
Second.
Can I speak to this some?
Yes, sir.
I would like to speak to this. You know, so what is, what is the plan? I mean, I'm not stupid. I, 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 I kind of see what's going on, but no one tells me anything. It's like, get here in the board meeting, so we'll talk at the board, board meeting.
Well, if
What is the plan? I mean, you just talked about, people had today and they have Friday to give input. And where do we go from there? Is it going to be later in this?
Later in this meeting, if you follow the agenda, we'll discuss that.
Yeah, I'm well aware to follow the agenda, but, you know, I'm not real hap, you know, I can't make tomorrow. I mean, I'll find a way. I'll, I'll give up my plans for tomorrow. You told me on Tuesday, I replied to the Google ask for days I couldn't make, like Tuesday evening.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I'd like to remind you the doodle pool was only for work sessions and listening sessions. It was not for special board meetings.
Just point of a clarification, to my knowledge, we don't have a meeting tomorrow.
Friday. I'm skipping ahead. I'm skipping ahead.
Alright.
Okay. I'm skipping ahead. Because it's, because it's quick. It's quick. And I just, I just thank you. I mean, I'm just trying to understand, so.
And
Back to the motion.
We do ask if you have questions before the board meeting that they present to the chair or the staff as well.
Yeah, no kidding. I, I did that.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. We've had discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Motion passes. So this is the point where we're going to review and discuss recruitment and appointment of a superintendent under Board Policy CCB. With the, what we're looking at right now, in school starting with the close and cloud of COVID over us, is important that we have someone in place. Board Policy CCB gives us guidance on recruitment and appointment of a superintendent. Have you all had a chance to review Policy CCB as it is in Board Book?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that CCB or CBB?
CBB. Thank you, ma'am.
Just making sure.
Does anyone have discussion about CBB? If not any discussion, I have invited the district's legal counsel to discuss options available for the board on recruitment and appointment of a superintendent.
Can I back up? I, I, I deem that board policy probably construed more along the lines and thoughts of traditionally finding a permanent superintendent. The timelines required in that policy would cause some pretty serious, serious consequences to us in being able to get somebody in place and getting the school year up and running successfully. So I'm concerned about it.
Thank you, sir.
Chair Aganaga.
Yes, ma'am.
There are three policies, so I'm not, just to be sure, and I'm not sure if CBB is the one that has an AR associated with it. But just to be clear, there were three policies in your board book. One has an associated AR to pay attention to in terms of that. The other thing I would say is, we've actually been in this situation before, three short years ago, staff have. And in that process, and I was going to say, just to remind, some of you weren't here. But in that process, one of the things that happened actually around this time of year, in July, there was an acting superintendent for a few months while there was a superintendent, a nationwide superintendent search for the interim. And that is how the board identified and interviewed several, and I think you were a part of that, maybe not, at the time. That's how we got Dr. Ten Mills, who at the time was retired in Colorado, but had served a long time in Oregon. He was interim for 10 months while he kind of ushered us through a process for a permanent that involved a much lengthier process with panels and such. So just a reminder to the board that staff have done this three years ago, almost identically in terms of acting, the interim nationwide search, and then a longer search for a permanent. And it would be, I think, staff's recommendation that we do what we've done before.
Thank you, ma'am. I invite our legal counsel to join the conversation.
Well, thank you all. Again, Paul Decopoulos, I'm new to this situation. I wonder if you would permit me just to make a few general remarks before I launch into the legal stuff.
Please.
This is a difficult situation. It is fraught with a lot of emotion. You're, you have received public comment with a lot of conflict. My goal as your legal counsel is to give you clear guidance, but you folks are ultimately responsible for that decision. You know, I come into this with a lot of care for you, for your superintendent, Melissa Goff, for this district. I'm going to use my best efforts with that in mind. And I also believe that, you know, we have a contract that contemplated that this could happen. I mean, there's a contract provision that gave the board the ability to do a 10-day contract termination. You exercised that. That is done. I think reasonable minds can differ about whether that's a good idea, a bad idea, but it doesn't matter now. I think everyone was trying to do the best they could for this district and this community. So with that said, the board's decision has created some real challenges. And I think that the Assistant Superintendent and Director Nyquist have accurately said that the, really the process under, for the recruitment and appointment of a superintendent under your policy CBB really did contemplate a period of transition. You have not, you have given yourself very little wiggle room for that kind of transition planning. I know that Superintendent Goff has put together a transition plan because under Policy CB, she gets to delegate authority for superintendent functions. And my understanding is, she has sent that to the board chair with, with her delegations, because today she's still the superintendent. So we have a plan from Superintendent Goff right now. The, the, the process for recruitment and appointment of a superintendent in Policy CBB envisions a process that takes some time. You've given yourself very little time. And just reviewing that, there's a lot of things you shall do and a lot of things you may do. You may engage in a nationwide search. You shall develop, develop and adopt the standards, criteria and policy directives. You may seek the advice and counsel of interested individuals. And you will appoint the superintendent by a board majority vote. So it's a pretty basic policy. The, the paragraph about developing and adopting standards, criteria and policy directives is the direct language out of the public meeting law in Chapter 192. That is used in these policies because that will allow, if you do the, excuse me, if you do those things, that will allow the board to meet in an executive session to interview candidates. But again, this, this process will take some time. And so the question that's posed to me is, under your existing board policies, what, what are the options? Right now, when the superintendent contract ends on July 24th, which is Friday, there will be no superintendent, but there will be delegated authorities to administrators, and you have an assistant superintendent. The assistant superintendent is essentially in charge of what the assistant superintendent does and any delegated authorities to her until that changes. So the, in the short term, and I mean in the next week or the next number of days, you have an administrative team ready to carry on the functions of the district. Now, what do you do to bring in an interim superintendent? It would really be the same problem if a superintendent became incapacitated and was unable to continue the functions of the job. I mean, that's, that's, it's the same problem. You don't have a superintendent. You just hastened the departure of the superintendent with a 10-day termination notice. So the only way I can figure out for, the only way I can figure out that you can bring in an interim superintendent is to have a process to do that. And if your goal is to do that sooner rather than later, the only way that I would recommend you approach this is under your board policy BFF, Bravo Frank Frank, this allows the board to temporarily suspend by a majority of vote when it is in the best interest of the board, a citizen, staff member or student, as determined by the board. So it would be possible to suspend the recruitment and appointment of the superintendent policy for the purpose of quickly deciding how to conduct a process that's different than Policy CBB. Now, one of the consequences is, you, you could never use an executive session for the purpose of discussing candidates, interviewing candidates. It'd be right here in the boardroom. Because you, if you suspend CBB, you won't be developing and adopting standards and doing all the things that the public meeting law says you need to do. So you could do that. And you could engage in a discussion after you did that. You could engage in a discussion to simply inquire with retired superintendents who are experienced and qualified. Will you do this for a short period of time? No more than a year. But at least until you are able to get some breathing room to do a search, you know, proper search, a search that's and, a recruitment and a search that's consistent with CBB. So let's say that process takes five, six months. You could, you could find a qualified licensed retired superintendent and get public comment. Well, first of all, you'd have to get public comment on even this process I'm describing and see what the public thinks, if, if this makes sense for your district. But after receiving public comment, you could adopt in another meeting, you can't do that tonight, but you could adopt a process which would essentially accelerate the search for an existing retired superintendent who you think would be a good fit. And identify that person. This would all be right here in the boardroom. And after you identified someone that you thought would be a good fit for the district, you could propose in a next meeting, hiring them. Now, not, not very competitive process. There's no competitiveness about it. I mean, if you, I suppose if you found three superintendents or even two who were, expressed some interest or desire, you, you could certainly interview them. But it'd be right here in a public session. And then you would be, ultimately, the idea would be if, if you found someone that you thought would be a good fit for a limited period of time, who can take the pressure off the board. I mean, your pressure is, you want someone qualified in place before the school year starts. For the administration, they have to have some continuity and some help with the administration of the district. So this is a lot of pressure on the administration too, for, for the ambiguity. But I think it would be possible, if you identified someone you thought could do the work, and you had a conversation with them, are you, would you be interested? You could adopt that kind of a process. And so you'd have to talk about, does that, I mean, are you interested in that kind of a process or not? If you are, I think you get public input on that process. And if you have a meeting scheduled Friday, you can talk about the public input. You can discuss this as a method of doing, it's a very accelerated process, and this is a very unusual situation that you've put yourself in. But that's, that's how I think it could work. You then, you'd have to essentially, if you found someone you thought would be a good fit, short term, my recommendation would be that you see if you can enter into a contract with them that, that has a definite end date, but that gives you the ability to terminate the contract earlier if you found an interim earlier. So, I mean, you, my vision would be that you'd have a one-year, a 12-month contract that could be terminated if the board was able to find the right, I mean, the, the right candidate in an interim search that, you know, that, that, that that ended before June 30 of 2022. And if you didn't find one by mid-year, then you still have, you'd still have an interim in place. And so you would be having a minimum of two more meetings. One on Friday to take the public comment, as you've outlined, by, by public written comment about, number one, taking action to suspend CBB under Board Policy BFF. Number two, you'd, you'd seek public comment. You'd have discussion and then take action. If you passed the suspension of CBB, you would then have discussion about an accelerated process, kind of as I've outlined. And then if anybody has any ideas, I mean, assuming that passed, if anybody has any ideas, board members would essentially do an inquiry, whether it's to the Confederation of Oregon School Administrators or
Alala or
I mean Superintendent Mills, other superintendents that you know. And if someone expressed interest, you would have another meeting sometime next week. A meeting in, in which you'd essentially hear what they have to say. You'd probably need to authorize me to at least have a conversation with this individual. You'd interview them, sitting right there, to, to see what they have in mind for leadership in your district. You'd, you'd, by then, that, by that meeting next week, we'd have, hopefully, a name. And the public would have an opportunity to know who that is, that you're thinking of, to understand their credentials and their experience and whatever. And you'd have a discussion and take action. And, I mean, that is a super accelerated process that gives the public an opportunity to comment, but it's compressed into such a tight timeframe. I mean, you could lengthen the timeframe and let the current administration function under the delegated authorities. But ultimately, if your goal is to have a new interim superintendent in place in August, this is a legal way to do it and permitted by your policy so long as you walk the, walk the thread that I've outlined. It's not ideal. You'd never want to use this, as I've suggested, for the search for a permanent superintendent or, or an interim if you had the luxury of time, which you don't have. So I'm happy to address questions. I'm trying to be a problem solver for the board, for the community, for, for the administration, given this situation.
Chair Aganaga, if I could ask a question, just to summarize, because that was a lot, Mr. Decopoulos. Okay, so basically, there's, we have a couple of choices. The teacher and me is just going to try and summarize. If the board suspends Policy BFF, or, I'm sorry, uses Policy BFF to suspend Policy CBB, they can do that. What the consequence of that is, is the board deliberation, you know, who they would like to talk to, who they're thinking of. Those interviews for interim have to be done in public session because it eliminates your ability to be in executive session. That's one option.
Good night.
Yes, because that's what I'm
So the, the deliberations must be in a public session, but this would not require the public to be on a phone call if Director Thompson calls someone he knows
Got it.
and says, hey, we have this opening. Can you start next week?
Got it.
So individual board members wouldn't could make separate calls but can't make any decisions. And everything has to return to the public boardroom.
Or decisions.
Or decision.
And, oh, right, and interviews.
If you find a candidate that's, and you think, well, how about this? That would be shared with a public meeting. I mean, my vision is one or two of you say, how about so-and-so, or how about so-and-so? And we'd at least have a preliminary idea that, that they're up for the idea.
Right.
I mean, we'd, obviously, they'd have to express interest, and yes, I'd be willing, and I'm happy to talk to the board about it. You, if you get that far, you need, you, I mean, you wouldn't have to, but to me, it would make most sense that you authorize me to have a conversation with a proposed candidate. If you come to, if you take action on this on Friday, you let me have a conversation about what might a contract look like? Because if you really want to get someone in here, there needs to be some discussion, and it will have to be in an open public meeting. What, what does a contract look like? And what I would do is, and if, explain this is how interim contracts generally look. I mean, we, we've done a number of interim contracts, including an interim contract with Dr. Mills. So I, I just wouldn't be able to decide any of the financial terms. All of those would have to be subject to public comment and board approval. But again, you're, because you've decided to use this process, you've given up the ability to have an executive session, the kind of session that would normally happen when you interview candidates like you've done before, or some, some board members who've been involved in that have done before. So there's, there's limitations, but this is about as streamlined a process as I could As I could, um, develop for your consideration. It has drawbacks. But this whole situation is a drawback. So, um, I'll, I'll pledge to help. You and your community and your administration in whatever way I can.
Go for it.
Thank you, counsel. As I understand it, none of these board policies around the naming of a superintendent, an interim superintendent, that are on the books for us, are backed by statute. We have the authority to waive board policy, correct? In this matter.
Under your board policy, you have, right. I mean, you're supposed to follow your board policies, and there's going to be extenuating circumstances. And this is an OSBA policy.
Okay, but it's not a state statute, it's not even an administrative rule, it's just a policy of an association.
Well, there is a statute that the Oregon School Boards Association cites in 332.107. For the proposition that you may suspend your policy. So, the answer is you have statutory authority to suspend a board policy.
So not only is there's no statutory authority prohibiting me from doing this, there's one that specifically allows us to do this. Thank you.
Now, the, the only, there's some caveats because this can't apply to everything. You can't, you can't, um, suspend a policy that you're required by law to have, obviously.
That's my question.
Yeah, but, but the recruitment of, and an appoint, an appointment of a superintendent is the sole responsibility of the board. The, the legal requirement that's in Policy CBB. Is the part that I talked about, a public meeting law. The public meeting law says you cannot, uh, have an executive session if you don't do these things.
And I think that's a blessing.
Yeah.
I, it, it doesn't bother me at all to not do any of this in executive session. I, I think there's.
So is, is the first step to open up the idea that we're looking, officially looking?
Well, you've, you've declared a vacancy.
Right.
So, right now, um, I think what you need to do. Um, um, since you've, you've, I've given you my best advice on a process. You need to discuss that right now and see if it's worth pursuing. If it is, if, if there seems to be consensus among the board that, um, yeah, this, this looks like a process that. Um, would be good for us. Then, um, if that's the result of your conversation, then you'd have the next meeting on Friday. Where you would suspend Policy CBB. You would, again, debate this, what I'm calling the accelerated process. Um, and you would consider public comments on the accelerated process. Uh, and you would then take action on that. If that passed. Um, then you're looking for a good fit. For someone who can stabilize the district. Um, that you have trust in, that the administration can rely upon. And that would happen sometime next week. And the public would get to comment on that individual. Um, do they like her or him? Um, but ultimately, it's the board's decision. Then, um, if, I would hope to have at least an outline of what a contract would look like. So the public could see that contract. Um, there'd have to be some spaces for compensation, right? Uh, I mean, we can put in what your proposed candidate would like. Uh, so we have a placeholder. But none of this is final till you folks, uh, vote on it. If, if, on the other hand, the process does not make sense to you, and the consensus tonight is, this is too complicated. Then what you're left with is the current administration will, um. Act in the place of the superintendent. Uh, you will recognize, uh, their authority as delegated authority from the superintendent. And you can still do an accelerated process, um, while they do their work and you support them. Or you can decide, let's just keep the current administration in place. And let's do a more lengthy process consistent with CBB. That's an option. So, right now, I would encourage you to discuss amongst yourselves, and if you have questions for the administration or me. To, to see what you think about what I'm calling the accelerated, let's find a superintendent before August plan.
That brings us to our next agenda item H, a board discussion on next steps relating to recruitment and appointment of an interim superintendent. Is there a discussion?
I got a, a brief question. Uh, Paul, would there be any reason we could not suspend, if we all, if the board all decided that we could not sus- uh, suspend CBB and CBBA are tonight? Or is that something that would have to wait for another meeting?
Well, my preference is, since this is the first time you, you are hearing this. That the public deserves. Um, and this is just a preference of mine. You have to, you have to make the decision, but for the, for the public to be able to consider. An accelerated search. I mean, an accelerated search means we're not posting this in newspapers and doing a nationwide search. Like CBB says you can do. So, I, I think you deserve some comment on that. So, just, just my preference.
Just intuitively for me. Um, if, if we, uh, suspended board policy. And immediately pursued the hiring of a superintendent. And we didn't like where we were at or what we got, we, that, none of that forgoes the option to do. What is the other proposal of just, uh, take a longer process? Uh, to, to ensure that we're, we're getting what. More of the market and what's out there available in candidates. I, look, I just, I, um, I gotta be honest, I struggle with the board policy stuff. My, I, I don't, I don't even know how many pages it is yet, it's somewhere between 500 and 1,000, I'm told. And I, I, I do the best I can to follow them, and, and mostly it's by, by not talking to anybody about anything. Um, um, but in this case, um, for me at least, I feel like I've got a duty to make. A hundred percent attempt to find, uh, the best quality person we can find as soon as we can find them to lead this organization. And, and the timeline is, the sequencing of time i- is not good. I, I, I agree with both of you. Part of that for me is a result of, of when we take office and when the school year starts. We are where we are. And it would seem to me that we would be. Forgoing an opportunity, uh, if, if we didn't strongly consider waiving board policy. Now, there is the issue of, we've asked the public what their thoughts are on this. I think before we make any final decision on it, we need to see and hear what those comments are. Um, but again, I, I don't know why we wouldn't do our best, uh, to get the best leadership we can as soon as we can. And do some good things as quickly as we can. I think there's tremendous value in having stability and certainty as the school year starts.
I don't think you, may I speak? Uh, Director Nyquist, I don't think you give up anything if tonight. The board demonstrates a strong preference, uh, for suspending CBB. That's what we want to do unless we hear something between now and Friday that, um. Really sends another signal. That's what we're strongly considering. And, and you will take action on that, barring some big change of mind Friday. I think the, for me, the bigger point is. Uh, having the public understand the process. You know, I can put the process in writing if there's consensus on it. I, but I think your public, given, given the conflict. Uh, having the public really understand what, what is Paul's, um, accelerated process? What does that look like? There may have, be some value in that. Um, you can even talk about that process tonight, if you really like it. Um, I can reduce it to writing so that the public can see it. And you can very quickly take action if it still makes sense Friday. And we can still, um, be on our way with, um, uh, trying to talk to, um. You know, qualified superintendents. It's your choice.
So, if we suspend it, it's just basically opening up us to find somebody. And if we find somebody that is a good fit. We can take action more quickly.
Well, I think you have to suspend this before you do anything else. Because your policy says, here's how we're going to find a superintendent, whether it's an interim or a permanent. And, uh, you don't have time to do the things that this policy says you shall do. I mean, a lot of these are may's, remember? But the shall will take, will take some time.
So, so are you saying if we wait till Friday to suspend, we can't start looking for people?
Well, if the board knows right now, after, well, after a discussion, and, and that there's consensus. On suspending CBB. And there seems to be consensus on this accelerated process that I've described. Nothing stops anybody from seeing what's out there.
Individually.
Individually, with no communication between board members. But. The, um, the optics are, I think, are important here for your community. Um, because it could be that by Friday you decide, boy, this is, that, on second thought, let's not do it this way. So, I mean, you, you'll have some people who may have expressed interest. But this is going nowhere, we're not going to do it that way. So, just be clear that you have to take action before we're going to go, before I'm going to do one more thing.
Chair Oganaga.
Yes, sir.
Uh, does anyone on the board have a problem with Paul putting together kind of the accelerated, um. List so that we could post that online so people could understand it? I think that would have some benefit to, to articulate what you described, and put it in writing. And then be able to disseminate it to people so they could look at that and then comment better, um, to our process.
If there's, I, I'm happy to do that.
We can make a motion to that, does anybody have any discussion or objection to that?
If there's consensus of the board that you're interested in the accelerated process. Um, I can, I can put that together tomorrow. Um, and send it, um, to board leadership and, and the board secretary, and you can publish it.
I'd remind the board that there is a school board that was in this exact situation, in this exact same district, at the exact same time, that followed this policy.
I, I don't think the situation is exact. I don't think the two situations are exact.
Clearly.
Director Thompson?
You know, uh, my brief, um, review of some of those ones that came in. Now, these folks making comment hadn't heard this, so give them a chance to digest this. But I saw a lot of comments about, um, searching outside, searching far and wide. Um, so, and I didn't tally them up, I could go back and tally them up, but, um, you know, I'm just, uh. But they didn't hear this, so, so I'm willing to give those folks kind of a redo, you know, to hear this idea. But I, I just want to say it's out there that maybe, um. You know, I, I actually believe, I think we are a big enough district that deserves to look outside. Um, I, I think we deserve that. I think we are in that, that category of district. Um, you know, so that's, that's my only hesitations. But that would happen, you know, if you found someone great, if someone has some idea, someone great, this would only be a fair period of time. And so a search, so at some point, what I'm getting at, there's going to have, I'm going to argue strongly for a search. Does it have to be this first go-around? No, but, um, I believe that in many of our comments, I think a majority of our comments had some form of, you gotta look far and wide.
May, may I ask a question? I just need for clarity.
Mr. Cervantes.
So, we're talking about an interim.
Yeah.
Right? We're not talking about a superintendent, permanent.
Correct.
So, I, I would appreciate if, if we could say interim superintendent every time we're talking about this. Just so the public is clear that we're talking about an interim superintendent and not a permanent superintendent. I'm sorry, I just, I just know that there's going to be a lot of confusion.
It is.
I'm new to the district, so I, it would be confusing for me.
Yeah.
It is confusing for me, so, so I would appreciate just the clarity in language, just to be extremely deliberate, so people know exactly what we're talking about here.
I for one will do my best, if I flunk, feel free to correct me.
Okay, you're giving me that permission, that's fine. I just want interim superintendent, please.
Executive Director Cervantes, that, that, that's been my, that's, that is my only plan. I would not support the accelerated process for a permanent. And I, I don't, I don't hear that from the board directors either. And, and to Director Thompson's point. Nothing would preclude the board. If, if, if this could work, and you get someone in who can stabilize. And provide the support that you need and the administration needs. Nothing would preclude you from engaging in a, uh, another interim search. Or, uh, I mean, it wouldn't make much sense this early, but you could start early on a permanent search. And, you know, having a full runway of a year for a permanent search. Um, is a good amount of time for a, a district your size. Uh, you know, I, as I hear myself talk, if you can find a good interim for the start of school. I, I don't know why you would want to then find a second interim for the next two months. I mean, if you're happy with your interim, then keep her or him. Uh, but again, you, you, you would have flexibility for a search. Um, a search process where you actually would have enough time, uh, with a start date of July 1, 2022.
And if we go down the path of the interim superintendent in the expedient way. That's, still allows us to, if we decide we don't find someone who qualifies, we can go back to the other if we choose.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to give you flexibility that if, for some strange reason. The, the, the perfect superintendent candidate walked in in February and said, I've always wanted to live in Albany. And I'm the superintendent of the, the National Superintendent of the Year. And I'd love to work for your school district. And if you thought that was a good fit, we wouldn't want, we would want to be able to get out of the interim contract. And, and hire someone you were interested in.
Through an, through an interview process, correct?
Yeah.
That would have to be an interview process, open to the public comment.
Right.
Even, even the interim, even the interim would have to apply again, correct?
So, this might be a good opportunity for me to speak to that. Go ahead and answer his question, I'm sorry.
I mean, if what we're looking for is a retired superintendent to be an interim. I mean, I think that if you find someone, you would want to get a pretty strong message that they don't want to be the permanent superintendent. I mean, the, the whole idea is that they're, they're here to stabilize, but not, um, put up, uh, pictures on their wall.
And that was Dr. Mills' full philosophy of, I'm just here to steer the ship while you find a good qualified candidate.
Paul, would, would the interim be precluded then from applying for the permanent superintendent's job? job?
You could, if you thought that was wise, you could make that a condition of the contract.
It's just, I just, I just didn't know if, what the normal status was.
But they have to go through the whole process.
Whole process again. Agreed.
And boards have done both.
Okay.
There have been boards who have said, you know what, we really just want an interim, somebody from the outside to stabilize. So, we would say that if you apply for and get the interim, you are not eligible for the permanent. And boards have said the other. The last time the boards at that time said, yeah, we don't want an interim to go into the permanent because it wasn't a full process, we just need somebody to stabilize. And that was the process with Dr. Mills.
So, so, right. And I, I think especially if we waive board policy and we do something on a fast track, if you will, I think stipulating that whoever we select not be allowed to apply for the permanent position would be of some comfort to the public. And that if we don't do that, in theory, we, we did this in a week or a few days. And in theory, they, they then have the inside track on getting that job for the next 10 years. So, for me, what I'm looking for is, in an interim superintendent, is somebody who's served successfully as a superintendent. Somebody who's, if I, we could find somebody who's served successfully as an interim superintendent, who's been here, done that, that would be great. And that they would not apply for the permanent position based on what we just talked about. I think it's very important where this community is today and with the work that's been done, that, that we find somebody that has a track record for advocating for all students to get what they need to have a quality experience, both educationally and socially. And then if we had somebody that was experienced in helping to facilitate conversation and the structure and that search for a permanent, if they'd been in the position of an interim before, that all would be helpful.
So, to close out H, it sounds like there is some consensus that the board would like to suspend policy CBB so that we can consider appointing a qualified interim superintendent for six to 12 months without an extensive search and competitive interview process to allow us to, allow us enough time to bring a search for a permanent superintendent that will meet other special, and we will meet in another special meeting on Friday, July 23rd, to discuss again and consider public comment to take action on that plan.
You're recommended we wait till Friday to give public some time.
Right.
The public can still give notice.
My, my, my position, well, it's not a position. My firm belief is we can never go wrong by asking the public what they think about a really important thing like what we're doing.
Right. And, and we, if I might, Mr. Chairman, we've just, a matter of hours ago, invited them to comment up until Friday at noon. And so making a decision precluding those comments, I, I don't think would be wise. I guess the other question I have about the Friday noon meeting, if Director Thompson can't be there, is there another time on Friday during the day you can do it or you just slammed?
Oh, if it's earlier and you're saying Friday noon, it was later than I, I assumed it was like five, another five o'clock meeting, but.
Right.
No, I can make Friday. But anyway, I was going to make it anyway. I'll make it anyway.
We could make it.
We can do it early, is what we're saying.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make that.
Okay. All right.
I'd make five, too.
I need clarity on that. I'm sorry. I think we all need clarity. It's a workday for us, so. So, we're asking, what time are we meeting at?
They're asking for the meeting on Friday to be rescheduled to noon, which we could give public notice. So, public comments that we generally have, since the board has said that the meetings are open to the public, that they have to provide their comment, not in person but in writing, we generally cut that off the day before at noon. We would have to do that earlier, right? So, written public comment then could be submitted now until probably Thursday night. I'm looking at Chris because she's the one who has to put all of those together. Usually we cut off public comment at noon for the five o'clock meeting. If the meeting gets moved back to noon, then we would have to say, we'll cut off public comment at eight, if that gives you enough time to try and put those all together and into board book. All of these changes, it's just a domino, right? So, it's just trying to figure out kind of what does that look like. I won't need to recommunicate that.
Yeah, I, I think that as, as you've outlined, my gut says would work. The other question, and it's procedural, i- is that a different meeting? Or can we, since it's all one and the same topic, is there some value in recessing whenever we're done here to reconvene at a time certain Friday at noon?
I don't think it makes sense to reconvene. I mean, I think we just call another meeting.
Okay.
Just more notice to the public. And by that time, I will be able to, to draft my accelerated process so that the public can understand what they're commenting on and what you're going to take action on potentially on Friday.
So, how is the public going to have the opportunity to comment on a plan that they don't yet have? So, I'm trying to think of, when will they have it? When can we publish that to put it on the website to give people an opportunity to, the timeline for staff will be hard.
Can I just clarify one thing? I believe Director Thompson said he could make five o'clock work.
I can make, I can make, forget about my, I can make five o'clock. Okay.
So, I think we can leave it, I can, we can leave the plan as was.
I'd prefer noon. I don't know what, I didn't know what you noticed or if you've noticed a time. When I saw it, there was not a time noticed.
So, Mr. Decopoulos, is the intent for you to have that written out plan to say, hey, here's what a process could look like? The board is going to suspend a policy so that they don't have to follow that because they're going to follow this? Hey, public, this is the accelerated process. What's your input or comment on that process? So, they can't comment on it until they see it.
I can have that to board leadership and, and board secretary by 10:00 AM tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Is that, will that work?
That will give them, if we cut off public comment at eight or nine, that gives them less than, I mean, that's a turnaround. I mean, I can make it work. But it's just a quick turnaround for them.
We're not talking about, would, when do you, would you cut off public comment on Friday?
Typically, it's, we cut it off on the day of at noon for that evening so that they can just all be processed.
Best practice also is to have these documents translated.
Right.
So, that, that adds to time, timeframe. So, you, you have a very diverse community here, so, and multiple languages. And obviously, Spanish being the, the primary secondary language that we speak in, in the community. So, you'd probably want some time there as well.
This probably shouldn't be a very wordy statement then. Well, I know I can do this. I mean, it's, it's your timeline. So, I'm happy to be here at noon Friday or at 5:00 PM. I think 5:00 PM, if people are able to do it, it gives a little more time, but I, I won't make the call on that.
Director Morse, you have a preferred time?
More opportunity for the public, the better. So, I'm fine with fine.
I'm flexible.
Do it at five on Friday.
Make that work, Roger.
Okay. So, we'll do it at five. Was your standard noon cutoff?
Yeah.
Now, I'm going to move on to item I, invitation of the public to comment by email relating to one, qualifications for the superintendent. And two?
Interim.
Interim superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Servantes. And the recruitment and appointment process for interim superintendent. This email, this email comments will be considered for the next board meeting scheduled on Friday at 5:00 on the 23rd. I'd just like to remind the public they are invited to submit comments by email relating to what they would like to see in an interim superintendent and as well as what they think of board suspending policy CBB and appointing a qualified, experienced interim superintendent. There's no.
And may, may I suggest also that you post policies CBA, which is the board's policy on qualifications and duties, because that's a really good starting point. And whoever you look at, that's the lens through which you will look at the superintendent.
And there is requirements to obtain a superintendent's license. So, if somebody has been retired, you know, there is requirements from the state.
Well, we'll have to, if we're, if we get that far, you'll, they'll have to show that they've got a superintendent's license.
Correct.
Mr. Decopoulos, one of the things that you had said earlier, which was helpful, and I know the board, different boards have done things differently, board chairs have done things differently in terms of individual board members having conversations or just soliciting interest, whether that goes through the board chair and or not. And that in order to avoid violating public meeting laws in terms of chain meetings, that it would be the one person saying, hey, I think I know somebody that might be interested in reaching out, as opposed to three of them either having a conversation or emailing saying, hey, we think this person is a good candidate.
Right. This is a murky area in the public meeting law. The Attorney General's rules on public meetings talks about the, some of these gray areas. It's very clear that you may not have a board meeting amongst yourselves on text, cellphones, emails, any digital platform. So, that, that would be something to definitely avoid.
What you talked to us earlier was if Director Morse or myself or another director had a, someone they believed was a good qualified candidate, they could direct them to you and you would have a conversation to them, with them.
I could, I could do that.
Yeah.
But I will not be.
You're, you're not, you're, you're explaining the situation to them.
I'm not going to be then polling board members, what do you think about?
No. No.
So, to be clear, if Director Thompson has somebody who's, he thinks is a good superintendent candidate, it is not a public meeting law violation for him to call me and say, hey, you maybe ought to talk to this guy?
It is.
It's not a violation if he called. It, it's not a violation if an individual board member calls candidate X to say, would you be interested? And if candidate X says yes, I, it's not a violation for him to say, for Director Thompson to say, could you call Paul Decopoulos, talk to him about it? It gets murkier if Director Thompson said, well, let's discuss, I want you to call each separate board member, and then I want to hear what the board members have to say. So, I just, you know, be careful, this is the public's business. And I know you know that, but it's easy to, to have a phone call and then, or send an email especially and hit reply instead of, or reply all versus reply. So, just be careful.
If I had an interest and I, and I said, hey, Director Thompson, I think Johnny would be a good person. I'm going to call Johnny. And then Director Thompson called Director Morse and said, hey, she's going to call Johnny. Don't you think Johnny would be a good one? And then Director Morse called or texted said, hey, he talked to Johnny. That would violate public meeting.
I, the argument could be made, but the, the problem is devising a plan with board members. So, there's 100 different permutations of this, so I'm a little reluctant to get into all the, all the flavors of this. But if Director Thompson hears from someone and says, I have, and calls the board chair and says, I have someone I talk to, the, the conversation between the two of you is not a public meeting. But as soon as everybody gets looped in, it looks more and more like a public meeting. So, my advice is just tell me.
Isn't the spirit of public meetings laws that we cannot make decisions outside of a public meeting, nor can we deliberate towards a decision outside of a public meeting? Pure and simple.
Yep. And chain meetings are part of that, which is exactly what he just described. And that's actually been, I, I think that's actually been adjudicated.
I'm going to trust that all of you understand the rules and that if there are conversations that you have with someone who's interested, that you direct them to me. So, we keep this as squeaky clean for you and the public.
Yes, sir.
So, if, for instance, Michael and I have the same person in mind, he calls him individually, doesn't call me, but I'm doing the same thing, trying to call that person, that's not an issue, right? Because we never talked about.
That's right. That's right.
That's why usually it goes through, which is why earlier I said, you know, different board chairs do it differently so that somebody isn't talking to three separate people.
Right.
Either you can do it through your legal counsel or through the board chair or vice chair.
So, what would be the difference if it was the board chair? The board chair is a voting member of the body as well. And so, wouldn't that also be a chain meeting under your, under your definition?
No, only if he reported it back out to you and to everybody else. This is actually, I mean, there have been cases exactly for this. The whole reason for a public meeting is so that you all aren't communicating with each other outside of the purview of the public. So, if you text Eric individually and then you text Brad individually and then you text Pete individually and Pete texts Michael, for, for the spirit of the law, that's a public meeting because you all have information that you've given each other outside of the purview of the public, which is why when you suspend a board policy that requires you to do some of it, you no longer have access to executive session. The spirit of a public meeting law is that decisions and discussions that are in front of the board are in front of the public and they have some opportunity for input. The three biggest usually being budget, special education, and certainly the hiring of a superintendent.
I would just strongly encourage everyone to send their contact directly to legal counsel and, and then he will feed it back out to us.
It's privileged communication at that point.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. A question on the, when, if, if we were to vote to suspend CBB, would we not also at the same time suspend CBBA R?
You are not suspending the BFF, you are using BFF.
No, I understand, using BFF to suspend CBB and CBBA R.
Well.
You just mentioned the CBB and I didn't know if you also, had also included the AR.
Well, CBB only, C, the AR only has its life if the policy is infect, but we can, we can sure mention the AR as well, just so there's no ambiguity.
I just wasn't sure. I knew it was separate and, but attached.
Yep.
Gentlemen, anything else?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for allowing me to, to give some, just some beginning thoughts. I, and I do wish you luck on this. Thank you.
Do we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
I second.
They're adjourned at 6:05 on July 21st.